This conference will now be recorded.
Well, hello. So if we could stay online and I've got one other thing I want to bring up, I'd like you all to listen to and bear with me. This regards Gary Mahoney. Aronda wrote this up today and I'll try to get through it as best I can. I would like to open this meeting by sending condolences for myself, council and staff to Cindy and her family on the untimely passing of Gary. Gary has been a large part of our management team in the position of cemetery manager for over five years. Gary has also been an active member, sorry, with the fire services for over 40 years, with the majority of that time on the Wallace Fire Department, Station One. He was also very active on various community groups over the years such as Death Unlimited, Eternal Springs, and a member of the Legion. Gary will be missed by all his friends and fellow staff members at the home. Can we, can we please acknowledge Gary with a moment's silence? Okay, thank you for bearing with me. Let's carry on with the meeting. Okay, we'll go through the minutes. If somebody would like to make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented, please. Counselor Wright, Counselor Penner. Any discussion? Everybody's happy with them? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Carried, thank you. Okay, that was the 25th meeting, sorry. Okay, number two, adoption of the agenda. So you have it in front of you if you want to go through and see if we missed anything or we doubled up on anything. And if, okay, I would have somebody move the adoption of the agenda as presented, Counselor Gardner. Sorry? Okay, sounds good. Okay, that was Counselor Gardner made the motion by Counselor Wade, thank you. So the argument of the meeting report, we will move on to our next meeting as the sergeant cannot make tonight. And we'll move along to number four and we all have this paper form. So we'll do it together. And that's not one, nice shiny yellow. We'll just wait until Carl gets up here. And look through your financial department and see if there's anything that's against you or you're not to be involved in. Yeah, I saw it a while ago, it's just that nice yellow. Here we go. Okay, everybody's had a chance to go through. Any thing there that you can't be involved with? Everything's okay? We use that, but you won't leave the room, so. Any questions on any of the checks that are going to be issued and paid for any of these bills? If not, okay, sorry.
Do you want me to make a motion first?
No, I was, I was gonna get Mr. Penner first. Yes, go ahead.
Are we ready to have a question?
Yes, we're doing the question part here for right now, then we'll move ahead.
I mean, oh, it's the contribution of your capital. Yeah, we're doing it now, right?
Yes.
Oh, that's the, the member.
Good. Now, Whitney, you were making a motion or do you have a question?
Well, I've got a question too.
Well, let's make the motion. We should do it in that first one. Sorry, Counselor Penner. Can I get somebody to make a motion on this, please? Counselor Williams, second or Counselor Wright? All right, now the discussion. There's the right way to go. Sorry about that. Okay, Counselor Wright?
On the May 19th, uh, 0857.
0857.
I'm just wondering what that was.
That'll be, we're putting in the one.
Oh, yeah, we have one for four. Okay. And then I also have a question. Um, there's two on here, and then our key second, um, 0926 at the very bottom. I was just wondering, do you know if we have a whole bunch more to come up or are we kind of?
There's past things, some already.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not sure.
See, I didn't know if we were like holding them like the deposits until or if we just re-issued them.
If people are canceling, we're, okay, you know, we're waiting for people.
Okay. Okay, yeah.
Anything else, Counselor Wright? Counselor Penner?
On the May 19th. Duncan, this year.
I'm sorry.
The week 27?
They came in and did all the, the factoring.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a while. I've seen them, I saw them out doing it, so.
That's maybe that happened.
Right, that wasn't anything to do with the airport, but, no.
That'll be separate.
Yeah. Okay, Counselor Gardner?
Number 095.
Okay. Sweeper Parks?
That'd be probably the rooms and, uh, you don't need to look it up.
I think it was bearings. It was a couple of big bearings that had to be changed. But if you want to have a look here. It was 25, 0925. I remember Morris talking about that one day, something about some bearings, so I'm, maybe I'm wrong.
Well. Um, rooms and then it finished, taking a minute to set. Wire, $1,120. Pardon me? I know, I'm getting, I can hear. It's your fault. Oh, um, it's the wire rooms, the rooms. $1,120, calling main room, the tenant's $4. And then just a whole bunch of little bearings and stuff that some drive to you and just a whole bunch of.
Just general maintenance, basically, with some rooms. Okay, any other questions? Okay, if there's nothing else, I'll call for the question. All those in favor paying the bills together, Counselor. Okay, great. Carried, thank you very much. Now that covers both four and 41. Good. Everybody's okay with that? And now we can move into do you want to do the public hearing or wait till eight?
Yeah, we have to wait.
Okay, so we'll carry on and do some bylaws and then we'll come back to number five at eight o'clock and do the public hearing. So number six, bylaws, 2020 levy bylaw, and I'll turn that over to you, please.
Would you mind if we just put out an order on this agenda?
Sure.
We can just vote in number 2780, is only by law amendment?
2780, sure, let's go to 61, folks.
And I'll just turn my microphone on.
You bet.
And then you do that.
Uh, two things. Thanks Tina.
So just wondering, has the location been picked for the well? Like, yeah, but like, will they drill it like on the corner or, or like just off the road or like where would it go? Anybody know? The only reason why I ask that is because, of course, that land that I have is a gravel pit. I'm gonna be a gravel pit forever, right? So I just don't want anything to stop us from mining that rest of that land out. Is what? Also like, so is it on, so it must be on the, on the east side of the road then? That's my land. No, I own that whole thing right to the fence line down where Mike Reed put his new house. And I wouldn't, I wouldn't want a well there. Because that's eventually, that's going to be a big hole in the ground there someday. It is what Rhonda? Oh. No. Yeah, right up in front of where that little spot's been dug out. Yeah, that wouldn't be a very good spot. Oh, no. Well, I seen a stake back in there, but of course, nobody ever told us what it was, so. Yeah, and then that road that goes up the hill, that's actually going right through the middle of my land. Yeah. So, okay. Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, you've seen where that white pipe sticks out of the ground there on the road? So the road allowance would be, that's within the road allowance? If that road was to be built to proper standard?
The road allowance on the road, yeah, I'm not.
That would be right in the.
But everything had to work off of, like a survey anyway. It is, it is what this.
So Wallace isn't water service in order?
Well, no, no, I, no, I'm just asking like where, where the proposed, because that's, that's my only concern is, you know, it won't be for a few years that we'll get there, but in, in years to come, that's going to be all, because that's what I bought the land for, was for the gravel, so. And really, that's, you know, sand and gravel is kind of what, where it's at for that property. And in behind that, there's going to be a big hole in the ground. So as long as, you know, if, if, if it's on, if there's lots of room and enough room there, then, but I don't want a pipeline going through there, that's all. But as far as drilling the well there, if you were going to go from there and then go south towards the existing, what's there now in the valley? Yeah, I wouldn't think there'd be an issue there. Barry owns that. My land cuts across just beside that quonset and goes right south to those trees. And then, or he goes way up on top of the hill. Yeah. Yeah, and then it borders the, the old Rock Hall property or the Keystone Oilfield property or, yeah. But if you, if you were down there, you can see a trail going up the hill, a real steep trail, well, that's on Barry's land.
Well, I'm waiting for that.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I, the only question I had. Thank you. Which one? The one going up the hill? For the main gravel? Right.
So there is, that, there's the road, the gravel road? That's the actual, right here. That's showing the container and you on the other side of the river. And see, that's, that's really, yeah. So yeah, none of the.
Well, the river, the river doesn't screw it all.
Yeah, exactly. They're just built around where it's turned, right?
Yep. So that's the most promising spot is, is where that pipe is? Is that what? Yeah.
So this is the real road, they made it. So you'd want to go there.
Not very good.
That, that road, so this is where we're kidding.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just kidding.
Yeah, there's the, there's the quonset right there. And then, yeah, so this is all, and then this is all mine. Forty-two acres.
Yeah, so that's kind of a.
That's, yeah, that'll, that'll be on the property, Ron, between me and Mike Reed. Yeah. Yeah, they did, they did a few, they did two or three down in the pit. I think they did some up on hip rolls.
This is speaker on? I was just wondering about whenever the testing and stuff is complete to everybody's satisfaction, whether there will be a, a, something may go on the website with regards to Google Earth or something like that to lay out where all this stuff is and where the proposed lines might be going at some point in time, to give you some sense of how this work is going to unfold. And I think that would be helpful to the rate piers and those affected. The other thing that I was wondering about too, the initial tests must have given you some comfort that the arsenic level in the, in this part of the, is it, is it the same aquifer that we're drawing water from now, is it just posed at a different location or perhaps different elevation in the ground? I'm, I'm presuming it's a, it's a different body of water that you're pulling from. Is the intent then to pull from two wells to try and average yourself down with regards to arsenic content? Or what's the long-term plan? I guess I would look forward to that as a, as a rate pair in the town here for whatever information, once you're comfortable proceeding ahead. The other thing that I would have as a, in a different light with regards to the state-of-the-art water treatment facility that we've got there now, that was designed to handle arsenic levels at and increased levels going down the road. Unfortunately, the federal government and the province, when they're able to test finer, they raise the bar so that you now no, no longer are able to cross. And I'm just hoping that there's some assurance to the council here that you don't make it, you could spend $2 million here or $3 million here, the province or federal government arbitrarily moves the arsenic levels and arsenic is a naturally occurring element in North America in the pre-Cambrian Shield. Because nobody gets away from that in this country. And if they move it to a level where you can't cross again, then you're back in the blue again. And I guess that's a concern that I would have. You could literally, could literally break a town if, if those dynamics change on you. Yeah. 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 Those are just my thoughts anyway, Mr. Murray. Thank you for my, your time.
Just have a general question or two. So you're gonna build a new pipeline? You're going to hook it up to the existing pipeline in the valley? Are you building a new pipeline to Verdun? To Verdun? Okay, so, so you've got, yeah. So you've got old infrastructure in town that's causing grief with, with brown water, et cetera, et cetera. How are you going to address that problem? I mean, it's fine to have a new well, but if we've still got a problem in town, how are we going to address it? I, I realize that, Murray, but are you really solving your total problem? Yeah, I, I, I realize that. So rea- really all this is doing is getting the arsenic out of the water, period. You're not really doing anything else to the water, just trying to get rid of the arsenic. Yeah, I'm like, I'm not against you having a new well if that solves that problem, but don't let the rate piers think under false pretenses that all the problems of the water in Verdun are going to be solved, because really, they're not going to be. Somebody's got brown water now, they're still going to have brown water after they pay 87 bucks a year more or whatever the, the number comes to. And I think you need to be upfront with the rate piers and tell them that. So that's all I have to, to say.
I said something, um, we brought up, uh, I remember Travis actually bringing it up when we first got on council about the pipes and all that when we were talking, discussing it. We had talked about our, we talked a lot about our asset management and the old pipes and that failing infrastructure is a big part of that. And I know it's definitely on our radar. It doesn't mean it's going to get solved tomorrow. Like, we've got some bigger issues to deal with first, but please don't think it's not on the radar because it 100% is. It's why, I mean, we looked at putting more money away to deal with, like, why we increased taxes to put more money into reserves to, to deal with problems like this going forward, because we, we know it's an issue. We're not naive to that. So that's just my piece on it, I guess.
Yeah.
On to number 6.5, bylaw number 2784. LP boring. And that one over to you, please. And that's bylaw 2784. I've got one here. I can give you one.
Oh, here it is. Okay, bylaw number 2784 is a bylaw to authorize borrowing of the money.
I just have a question. So if we decide, or if they do these further tests and then decide that this isn't enough water, like, we don't have to necessarily go through with the exact plan that they have. This is just for the borrowing, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, so, so the plans can change a little bit with, okay.
Yeah, it's really not for, that's why I didn't want to show that, you know, recommend for possible pipeline routes or anything.
Yeah, okay.
They don't have any of that now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
First, I would like to make the motion that the Town of Verden enter into a cost-sharing agreement with Manitoba Infrastructure for the overlay of King Street from Trans-Canada Highway to Thomas Drive, with the town being responsible for the overlay portion on the parking lanes from Thomas Drive to the King Street Bridge at an estimated cost of $50,000. And further, that the Town of Verden agree to investigate the age and condition of the underground facilities along King Street and drainage, specifically at King Street West and 8th Avenue South. Before they change their mind. You rip it up. Okay, 7.2. I move that the Town of Verden authorize secure energy, energy services to proceed with the required works at the Verden Municipal and Industrial Waste Facility. Okay. Required works at the Verden Municipal and Industrial Waste Facility for an estimated total budgeted amount of $896,000, with the projects to be billed out at time plus material basis and all third-party costs being charged at cost plus 10%. And further, that all change work orders must be approved by a Town of Verden representative prior to such work changing. And further, that the total project amounts not exceed the approved budgeted amounts. 896. Stuff they're sourcing for us.
It's common. I presume a lot of this is equivalent work plus the one. What's the basis for? Do we know what the rates are?
Not taxable dollars. I'm, uh. No, I'm on, yeah, 7.3. I have numbers in, that aren't on this paper. There's more in the agenda. I have two more. 7.3. I make the motion, whereas Canadian Pacific Railway has asked the Town of Verden to enter into a five-year agreement for the use of land between the CP Right of Way and the Town of Verden Millennial, Millennium Bed Park at the cost of $1,500 per year. Whereas the council is not prepared to pay rent on this property as the town has mowed and maintained this land as well as other CPR-owned lands within the town with no reimbursement being received from CP, from Canadian Pacific Railway. Therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Verden will remove any of its assets, including a small flower bed, sign, and elevator from the Canadian Pacific Railway property, so not as to incur the annual rental charge of $1,500. It's like a figurine of a kind of person, the metal. Or we're getting a bill? I'm just, I'm just. Yeah, I'm just super disappointed that they're doing this to us and any other small towns they're doing this to. Yeah, super disappointed that they would do this. No. Okay, oh, just a minute. I, yeah, I got one more. I will make the motion that the Town of Verden agree to amend the agreement, Town of Verden 14 dated February 15, 2019, for the new groundwater supply investigation project, adding an additional $50,000 to the project, with the Town of Verden being responsible for 50% of that amount. And I'm done. Oh, sorry. I didn't hear. Sorry.
Um, I, I will make the.
Um, I, I will make the, uh, motion that the ice rates at the Tender Oil and Gas Place for the 2020-2021 season be set as follows. Primetime at $112 an hour and non-primetime at $60 an hour.
Where's that little pain? Why are there? I'm sitting on it, yeah. All right. Number nine, AMM issues, and I will turn that one over to you, Rhonda, please.
Okay, I think actually the title and the attached ones here. First one had to do with the presentation from the council, or sorry, from the convention in 2019. And AMM has actually sent out correspondence that you can actually go on their link to see what response they have gotten from the provincial and federal government regarding the very resolutions that we took through the fall conference last year and put to the floor for lobbying purposes. So I just wanted to, you know, draw your attention to those so you could actually go on and see what the year's actually conference was for. I know the meetings that Mary has here are in her writing attending. Some of their councils aren't aware that this actually comes out from AMM as they are. And I'm not.
All right. Dennis County, we had a virtual meeting, TransCanada Planning, I think was since last council. We have, it doesn't feel like much when I don't leave my house and go to these places, or hard to remember those two. And then I've been in the town office a few times with things with you and Rhonda and stuff like that, but just a lot of virtual meetings.
Allow access to our facility. Yeah. So as all of you, I guess, make sense, we started with Canada Day meeting.
There's the one you were thinking of. That a girl.
Financial meetings, of course. Planning Finance, TransCanada West, that was interesting. Dennis County, 26th, had a virtual meeting with Secure. Of course, financial plan hearing. On the 29th, we had our MMAE Annual General Meeting, virtually. And today, we actually had our KAMA Annual General Meeting, virtually. I'm going to finish that right now. Good to you, yeah. Tomorrow, yeah, meeting with the engineer and also with Urco to talk about the water project. I appreciate a lot of our time, not only preparing for budget, obviously, but meeting with the engineers. Sorry. Office of Drinking Water. And, um... Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm flipping through my book here. Met with LRB, they started to light some new lights. Sent a picture out with half or partial new lights. It's going to be pretty bright in there.
It's good.
Nobody will complain. But, yeah, we've been quite busy. And I was also asked to send a thank you to the Town Council and staff for the flowers that were sent to the whole family. So I wanted to do that. And I think that's about it.
Good. Thank you. Well, for myself, other budgets and planning and finance and different things. Tara and I planted trees yesterday. Tina and I, sorry. Did you? Oh, sorry. Well, the one thing Tara, Tina and I were thinking of you then. But we planted trees down by the junior high. If you get a chance, go down and have a look at them, they're very nice. And the first kid at Briggs one, I'll probably be in jail, but anyway. They did a very nice job. And yesterday, I attended a World War II Veterans 99th Birthday, Les Downey. And had a nice visit, sat down, had a nice visit with him. And Anne was there and some other people and got pictures taken. And, yeah, went over very well. So other than that, that's basically normal phone calls and stuff that everybody's happy about dogs barking and different things. But that's basically it, so. We'll carry on then with our committee reports done, notice of motion. I'm sure there'll be none of that. So can I get someone to adjourn that we go into in camera, please? Counselor Gardner and Counselor Mieszkinski, that a boy, Carl. Okay. Anybody got to use the little boy's room or the little girl's room or?
So basically, yeah, this is the confidential portion.
I don't know. I heard the sirens, but I don't know where the fire was. I'm not sure. Lindsay, you need some answers. You betcha.
There's the, there's the number 17.
The tree planting. Actually, Tina initiated that, I believe, if I correctly say that right. The tree planting, I think Tina initiated that. Tina was actually the one that got that going.
Are you wondering about the trees?
Yeah, he'd like some more information on that. He knows more about it, Lindsay, than I do, so. Oh, there's got to be 40.
What are they?
Apple trees. There's different breeds, I think. Yeah. It's kind of like, some of these trees are five, six feet tall. They're five or six. They're five or six feet tall and they're.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I can go? I make the motion that all Town of Verden recreation grounds, including soccer and ball fields, may be open upon the approval of back-to-play safety plans as approved by Manitoba Public Health and provincial sport organizations, if applicable, and the signing of a required agreement with the Town of Verden. And further that, the Town of Verden Civic Center be open to the public June 15th. And further that, the CP Station Historical Center be open June 15th, following Phase Two guidelines.
Second. And more.